Good evening and welcome to the May 4th, 2021 Northern Lebanon School District Committee Meeting. I call this meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. Thank you for joining us virtually this evening. Please know that all webinar community member participants will remain on mute during the meeting unless they have put in a request to speak during the public comment period. Those wishing to make public comment were asked to submit that request by four o'clock this evening via email or online form. Mrs. Martin, may I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Gray?
Here.
Erdman?
Here.
Baller?
Here.
Marlowe?
Here.
Murray?
Here.
Klein?
Here.
Calick? Nam?
Here.
Buck's?
Here.
All members present.
Thank you.
The board met in executive session today, May 4th, at six o'clock to discuss safety and security. And the board will meet immediately following this meeting to discuss confidential personnel information. This evening, we are going to swap item two with item three so that we can start off with our presentation by Crabtree, Roarbaugh, and Associates. And we have Scott Cousins to present to us this evening on our update on the building project.
Thank you. Yeah, and so this is kind of our last update before we go out to bid. And so we wanted to touch base with you on some items, just let you know where we're at on the elementary project and the athletic field project. Kirk, can you bring up the PowerPoint? You can go to two slides in. So as I mentioned, we're kind of wrapping up and closing in on finalizing our design and details and finalizing our bidding documents. And we're going to be releasing bids June 1st. The project will be out to bid for about a month. During that time, we still have opportunities to make some changes and adjustments through addendums that we can issue to the bidder. So but we're land development approvals are anticipated in the May-June timeframe to align with the bid receipt. So next slide. So one of the big updates that we wanted to go over was one of the items brought up actually by a board member last meeting was material price increases and kind of what's the status of the current construction market and bid market. And so I'm going to kind of talk through some items. Fidavia is also on the call, and they can kind of echo in along with Mr. Jones, Dave Jones, your solicitor, who has some also insight. But you know, we've kind of seen, you know, during COVID and kind of over the winter and the spring, there was this lull in the construction industry. There really wasn't much bidding out there. Contractors were kind of running out of work to do and had a lot of availability. And so you saw this kind of kind of start to ramp up in the in the winter and now where there is a lot of, there's a lot of projects on the street and a lot of items bidding. However, there's still a lot of availability in these contractors' workloads. So we're still, even though there is a lot of projects bidding on the street and a lot of work out there, we're still seeing good coverage in these bids, meaning there's a lot of prime contractors, multiple prime contractors bidding a job. There's multiple subcontractors bidding a job. So there's still kind of that hunger and desire to fill up some of their workload. However, as we come out of the COVID world with some of the impact to things that happen with demand and availability of some materials, we are seeing some significant material price increases. And you can see there listed in, you know, things like steel, copper, metals, woods. And in addition, we're seeing some things we haven't seen in a very long time, which is which is material availability becoming an issue, meaning, and we talked about that last meeting, that one of the things that we're keeping an eye on was steel joists, what had happened with just the demand in the warehousing industry with, you know, the boom in online industries and shipping and things like that. There's been a huge demand for steel joists in relationship to warehouses. So we kind of, we're keeping an eye on that. We thought we were still in good shape, but it seems like with every week that goes by, it gets it gets worse and worse. And you know, last time we touched base with the contractor, the joist availability was if you order, put in the order now, you wouldn't get your joist until middle of 2022. So we kind of made the decision as a team that we're going to have to kind of change our philosophy on how we design the steel structure of the building and switch over from joists to beams. Now, just to make sure that we have the availability to construct the building in the timeframe allotted. Now, what that means is beams are costing more than joists. So that means just an increase in construction costs, and I'll go over that a little bit later. So that was one of the things that we want to bring your breast on. And the other one is kind of, is back to the material price increases. There's a lot of volatility in the market right now, just with things going up and down. But you know, what we're hearing across the board is not like this is a peak, and we're going to see anything going down. You know, things might level off in the future, but you know, these higher prices are kind of here to stay. So we got with Fidavia and our design team and kind of reanalyzed all of our individual prime cost estimates, different prime contractor cost estimates, and analyzed some of our recent bid results, and decided to make an adjustment to some of those. And you'll see where we made those adjustments when we go over the cost estimate. But you know, I think the message is things are unpredictable right now, but we are trying to kind of hedge our bet and give you avenues that should the cost come in higher than you're comfortable with, you have opportunities to bring that cost back down. And those are through alternates. We are next slide.
Well, we're going to the next slide. Can you speak at all about the, I had a question about the joists versus the steel beams. In terms of durability and/or, you know, any type of, you know, safety, you know, the construction of the building, is there any difference between those two? I know right now there's some cost differences and availability differences, but in terms of the building itself, can you talk about any pros or cons or whether or not that that's a factor?
Sure. Good question. Essentially, our structural engineer is going to design the, whether it's a beam or a joist, is going to design that to the same load. So from a safety durability standpoint, they're one in the same. What makes joists more attractive is when you have this many of them, if you think about it, if you take it to a residential kind of framing method, you know, framing with dimension, regular lumber, tubeyes and things like that versus a, you know, oriented strand beam or something else that's more economical, the joists are basically more economical because how they're shaped structurally, it allows you to basically have the same load capacity with less steel. When you get to a beam, you end up with more tonnage of steel, and that's your price increase. But other than that, there's no, there's no difference. Constructibility, you can still construct the building in the same amount of time. Durability is once again the same. And so I mentioned, so the two areas that we're adjusting the construction cost are, one is the cost of the beams, and our structural engineer calculates that to be probably about in the neighborhood of $800,000 increase. Now, what I will say is that we are hearing from some of the general contractors out there that with how much demand there are in joists, that joists are, the price of joists approach the price of beams anyway. So I think it was an inevitable cost, even if joists were available, that we would have had to make that adjustment. The other adjustment is to, in the plumbing and fire protection, I mentioned, we kind of did that analysis of all the different primes and where we thought we were good versus where we thought we need to make an adjustment, the plumbing and fire protection, because they are so heavy on piping material and things like that. We compared with some recent bid results, and we felt that adjustment was needed to be made. So so those two adjustments flush out to what you see down below. So adjusting the construction cost to 42 million and then the total project cost of 51.8. So let's get to the next slide. So I mentioned, you know, what we want to do, so as we get north of 50 million, we wanted to kind of reevaluate the scope of work and see if there was any changes or adjustments that need to be made to try to get more closer to that $50 million range. And rather than, you know, just simply eliminate scope of work, we thought the best way to kind of hedge your bet to the table is to build in these alternatives. The district and the administration has kind of done a really good job along the way of separating want versus need. So I think you already have kind of a lean, a lean building approach where there's not a lot of extra fluff that's easy to take out. You know, throughout the whole process, they, the administration has been very good about, you know, kind of saying, well, do we really need that? No, let's not incorporate that. Or yeah, that's definitely a need. So so there's not too many things that we can look at, but there are some areas that we are looking at. So I'll start from the top here, and any questions along the way, please feel free to interrupt. So there's some areas from the piping material where we're going to allow an alternate bid to allow some different materials that aren't metal, so some PEX and CPVC and things like that. On the wiring side for electrical side, allowing some aluminum wiring versus copper. Copper is another area where we've seen some significant price increases, so allowing some copper wire or aluminum wiring in certain areas. And once again, these will all be price line items on the bid form that you'll be able to see the value of and make a decision based on the actual value. Looking at changing some of the exterior facade materials, so there's some materials that are more costly than others, maybe looking at incorporating some PDUCK alternates to vary the facade. There's some areas, what I call bonus spaces, that we've incorporated throughout the design. So if you think about the learning stair, the learning stair basically in the middle of billing goes from the first floor to the second floor. And it's, and so there's a space kind of under the rear section of that learning stair, that's available space to, and we created a small group instruction room there. That's in addition to what you need from an educational standpoint currently. So the thought is that you can forego that space without sacrificing the educational program, but at the same time, it's a very inexpensive space to build. So so that's another area. We already had the gymnasium platform above the toilet rooms, the storage areas, that second floor viewing platform as an alternate. And then we have a small sensory room above, stacked above another, one of the reading nooks in the collaboration areas that was once again the space that was easy to put a floor in. But once again, we can, we can see what that price would be and break it out as an alternate. Looking at just the quantity of playground equipment, these are things that you can always, you know, put a certain amount of playground equipment in now. And then further down the road, maybe the PTA buys some more playground equipment. So we have a, we have a kind of grouping of playground equipment that we have as an alternate bid. Roofing material, we have EPDM as our base bed, but certainly there's some other roofing materials out there like TPO and things like that that are, once again, none of these are meant to sacrifice quality or longevity of the building. You actually have TPO on some of your elementary schools, but it's sometimes a less expensive roofing option. The classroom door side light shades, we do have some shades on the side light doors that we typically don't do on elementary school. So we'll see the price to provide those and whether you want to select those or not. And I mentioned going to all beams on the building. However, we are going to incorporate an alternate bid to provide joists for the roof area. So if we do get in a situation where there is a steel supplier that's able to provide joists in the timeframe, they'll have the ability to provide that as an alternate bid. And we can validate that they're able to provide that in the timeframe, then we can take that credit. And then others to be determined. So we're still going through that list with Fidavia and with the administration to generate other items. But once again, this is meant to be kind of a way to hedge your bet. You know, some of the good things you have going for you, it's a brand, it's a new building that's certainly more attractive to bidders out there versus a renovation. It's a larger project, so you have an economy of scale. So there are some good things going forward that might benefit us and have better pricing than we anticipated. But I think the bottom line is it's a very unpredictable market right now. Dan, or did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I was just going to chime in. I was just going to chime in. I'm glad that you brought up the whole scenario with the steel versus the joists. I think that makes very good sense to have that as an alternate, just to show the cost differential between the two. We have went through this whole scope, rescoping everything, and Grotto continuing to do some value engineering with materials inside the building itself, like the flooring, et cetera. So there is other items that we're going to be looking at. And we are, we're confident with the project. We're looking forward to this coming through. And we have been in communication with a number of contractors, and they have all been sitting there just waiting for this to come out, even though there's a lot of work out there. We reached out to a couple of contractors just today, and they went and responded, yes, we are waiting for this project to come out. So it's good, healthy economy there for the contractors. And I'm glad to see that this project has got a good lot of healthy motivation about it.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. Hope everyone's doing well. It's Dan. Just, I won't be redundant. Just add a few comments that haven't been said. I think costs are going to continue to go up. We've been following this pretty well since COVID began. And everything we see is that costs, I mean, COVID presents another, you know, wrinkle iteration, something to adapt to. Every week, there's something else. And that's fine. That's how the world is. But in terms of predictability of cost, over time, we only see costs going up. Having said that, I don't think James mentioned this. If I did, I apologize. We've had projects regularly go out to bid, and we've been able to work through every project that we've had on the books so far. It looks like even including one, a fairly large project that came in bid yesterday, a complicated job, just a tiny bit south of you. And we were right, right under budget with it. So I think it just proves the point that a well-planned project, and from everything what you're hearing from James and Scott and Heather as well, this project has been giving a lot of attention. And the connectivity between the professionals and the marketplace is critical. Contractors can be more selective today with the current state of affairs, but on the other hand, they're hungry for projects that are well-planned by people they trust. So, you know, on that note, if you know of any subcontractors, contractors, as James mentioned, we're already reaching out to them to get the excitement going. So feel free to pass that information along to us if anyone needs, you know, needs some information. But yeah, it sounds like the project is in really good hands. And yeah, excited about it.
Yeah. Before Dave has to go, Dave, would you, you want to chime in?
Sure. Thank you. I think that the issue that came up the other evening was when I made a mention on the slow update of increased costs on, and if there was a potential for delay of the project, it might be in your business. My goal was not to scare anybody if you suggest that they should not work on educational program projects that are critical to the mission. My goal was to say, if you have a project that was not to take to an educational project, that could be put for some reason, it might be a good time to do so. The other reason I said what I said is I want to have a location among our board and school district to just make them a ball of what the market is. I believe that you're doing everything correctly. Scott and Crabtree are doing a good job. Dan is doing a good job from Fidavia. You're great hands. The other thing to keep in mind was is that money is cheap right now, relatively. So when you borrow, you have to pay for your buck on the dollar. So from my perspective, you're doing the right, and I just like to set expectations in. I mean, as attorneys, that's what you're supposed to do. Give us an idea of your expectations, what's coming down the road. And that was really what I was trying to do with my presentation the other evening. Sure. So please accept my apologies that I scared anybody. But you guys are good.
Thanks, Dave.
Any questions on the elementary school and where we're at?
Real quick, I guess this question's for Dan. Do you agree with the assessment then? And is it your recommendation that we move forward and not wait?
Yeah, definitely. I mean, keep the door open to potentially not, not award the project should something not work out as planned. But there's no reason to stop. I mean, if there was an expectation that money was going to be cheaper long term, or that prices were going to go down long term, or that, as Scott and James talked, all the, like, that's a real big issue with the steel. I mean, I mean, speaking personally as somebody who's talked to three of the main general contractors in our region who've been in touch with, there's only like two or three or four steel joist manufacturers in the region. Your team's got a really good pulse on things. So, you know, the process is being handled well. There's no reason to stop. But in the same breath, you know, you keep assessing as you move along. And let's see if we can deliver as intended and get good, good competition and get good numbers that, you know, we and you feel good about moving forward with. But yeah, there's no reason to pause whatsoever. Again, you know, we go through, we do a lot of this. And I can tell you, a lot of, there's a lot of architects who don't entertain and don't, aren't as flexible with making all these changes. I mean, it's not a tiny change to adjust the structure from bar joists to steel and all the other alternates that Scott ran through. It's just, that's the prudent, you know, the, you want to, you want to be proactive as much as possible, and that effort is happening. So sorry for the long-winded answer, but yeah, I think you're good.
When we had the plan con meeting, I think that was back in February, the formal public hearing, part of that meeting kind of assured the public that we would stay within a certain percentage of the budget that was presented at that meeting. I forget what percentage that was. Can you please remind me of that and tell me, are we still within that range?
Sure. Yep. Yeah, it was within eight percent of the building costs. Remember, that excludes the site construction cost. So we are still within that range, but that will definitely be one of the things that we, when we receive bids, that will validate and advise you if you have an issue with your act for 34 limits. But but we're still within that range.
Thank you.
Great question. Any other thoughts on the elementary school? Okay, touch real, just real briefly before I close, touch on the, if you'll go to the next slide, Kirk, on the synthetic turf field. So that is currently out to bid. We're receiving bids tomorrow. And we have some good bidding coverage on that. So this one, if you recall, this is kind of contingent on receiving all our approvals in time in order to have enough time to construct the project before the fall sports season. So really, I think we, I think we, you have a, once you, once we receive bids, you have, you'll have a, an award to decide, and that award should be contingent upon receiving those approvals because we anticipate Bethel Township Board of Supervisors approval May 13th. But if that does not occur May 13th, then you will not have enough time to construct that field over the summer. So that is one of the reasons why I want to bring up that approval of the award of bids will be, should be contingent upon receiving the municipal approvals on May 13th. But we have received MPDS permit. That is one of the more lengthy ones to receive. So we should, we should be in good shape with that. Any questions on the synthetic turf field bid? Okay, that's, that's all I had this evening. And the next time I'll speak with everybody, we'll be out to bid and give another update. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate that.
Thank you all. Thank you for the detail and especially for the transparency so that we can plan ahead for what's ahead.
Absolutely. And thank you also for adjusting your schedule and getting us out of the way. Appreciate that.
All right, now we will meet, or I'm sorry, now we will move on to the next item on the agenda. And that is that we, I have the pleasure of introducing our school board candidates. So in a couple of weeks, we have the primary election. Four of our school board seats are up for election. And we have two of our seated members choosing to run again. And we have two new candidates for school board. And so we've invited them here tonight to introduce themselves and to tell you a little bit about why they wish to serve on the school board. And we will begin with Mr. Robert England Jr.
Okay, is that on? Okay, I guess we're good. All right. So when my wife and I moved to this area 23, nearly 23 years ago, we were told that the Northern Lebanon School District was a great place to place our kids. And that advice was pivotal in us landing in Jonestown. So we look back, and four kids later, was it good advice? Well, I'm glad you asked. Our oldest is graduating in a few weeks, and we have a 10th grader, an 8th grader, and a 6th grader. And I feel like the Northern Lebanon School District has been a great foundation for them educationally. So I feel like the faculty, the administrators, those who have poured their lives and invested in our children, is a debt that we've been given as a family. And so one of the reasons I would like to run for board is to pay back a small part of that debt that's been given to us. The second reason I'm running is because I feel like all the young scholars in Lebanon, Northern Lebanon District need to have the opportunity for a great educational foundation. And so I'm excited about the direction that we're moving as a district. I feel like things have been moving in a positive direction. I would just like to join that effort to see that continue. And so that's why I'm here tonight. Thank you for your service and the opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to welcome Ms. Kate Kimball-Tazinski to introduce herself.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kate Kimball-Tazinski, or just Kate. I'm actually a product of the Northern Lebanon School System. I graduated in 2002, as in my brothers came after me, my cousins came after me. And I actually had a little bit different of an experience when my husband and I moved back here in 2018 after 10 years away from the state. I said, we can live temporarily here, but when it's time for Sutton to go to school, I don't want her going to Northern Lebanon. And I, you know, I kept saying that and kept saying that. And I finally asked myself, why? What was so wrong about my experience that I didn't want her to come here? And just that critical thinking really caused me to want to be involved early. Suchin, I know Robbie has said he's got four in the system. Sutton just turned three. So she's not yet in the system. And so I am running for her future because I don't want to say, I don't want her to go to Northern Lebanon. I want her to experience the great things that I did here. I'll admit, tonight has been a bit of a culture shock for me because other than watching my youngest brother star in the musicals, I have not been in this school since 2005. I have not been in here since 2002. And I'm excited to see what Sutton can do in her future and to be a part of a team making the decisions for our students. And to really participate, serving in higher education and now serving as an executive assistant who administrates our board, I'm excited to put together both ends of my experience and really serve, serve our students and serve their futures.
Thank you. Next, we can, I'd like to hear from Mr. Dave Klein.
Yes, thanks for this opportunity. I'm a lifelong resident of Northern Lebanon School District. I went to Jonestown Elementary, and then I graduated high school in 97. Currently, I have, currently, I have two children that attend Northern Lebanon. I have an elementary student and a junior high student. In my spare time, I'm heavily involved in some of the youth sports programs around town. And I've been on the board for a little over four years now. In those Um, in those past four years, I've certainly learned a lot. I certainly grew. And I really enjoyed my time on the board. Uh, one of the reasons I'm running is for continuity. I feel like it's important for, for experienced board members to stay on if they're enjoying it. Takes a while to get up to speed and learn how, how the system works, how being a good board director works. And, uh, I also feel like I do a pretty good job of representing our community. And I look forward to serving for another term and working with the board and seeing out this construction pro, project. And, uh, yeah, I look, that's it. I look forward to serving another, the term as a board director.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. And last but certainly not least, we have Ms. Stacy Murray.
I am Stacy Murray. Um, I've been on the board, um, a little over five years. Um, I have enjoyed my time on the board. Um, there have certainly been a lot of, uh, learning opportunities along the way. I've enjoyed, uh, serving on the, um, IU 13 board as well and have learned a lot. And so I feel that my experience, um, as well as my, um, social, um, service experience background, uh, makes me a, a great candidate for advocating for our students and advocating for our community. Um, I am a Northern Lebanon grad. I graduated in 1993. Um, and so I'm glad for the opportunity to, uh, continue to serve this community that, um, I, I love and has really been a part of my life for its entirety. Um, and so I look forward to serving in this capacity, um, again. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Ms. Murray, I'm sorry. Um, I'd just like, on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank all four of you for your commitment, uh, for your dedication to education. We know that, um, serving as a board member is a significant time commitment. Um, and we appreciate you throwing your hat in the ring, um, for Northern Lebanon. All right, moving on to item four, that is our public comment period. Those wishing to make public comment were asked to submit that request by four o'clock this evening via email or online form. Ms. Martin, am I correct that tonight we do not have any public comment?
That's correct.
Thank you. The minutes shall note that public notice was given for the meeting in accordance with Act 84 of 1986. Notices and advisements of these meetings will carry the intent that limited business may be conducted on any scheduled meeting date. Now we move on to item six. See, these are items that are presented to be on the consent calendar next week. First is item 6.1 through 6.3, Dr. Messinger.
And I, you guys are welcome to stay. You're also welcome to leave if you have better things to do, but, uh, it choice is up to you. And I will also say that I'm a little disappointed that as a 1987 grad, that I guess I'm the oldest grad in the room from Northern Lebanon. Uh, the first three items under number six are our typical approval of minutes, our student activity count and our cash dispersments.
Any questions on those items? All right, moving on to item seven, items under budget and finance.
Yeah, several items here. The first one is our typical LVC clinical experience agreement where we have kids from the college come over. And that is more of a, not a student teaching experience, but a, more of an observation experience. Uh, I believe at this point, LVC is, is planning and hoping to be able to send students. We did not have a full range of that this year, but, uh, for next year, they're, they're certainly hoping to do that. Uh, the item B is the student service agreement between Vista School and NLSD. Uh, you see that every year, um, agreement with them. Item C, item C is the, to adopt the proposed final budget. Um, as you know, when Ms. Martin, and she is somewhere on Zoom, uh, the world of Zoom, in case you have questions for her tonight. When she presented that budget, it, it did, uh, it did call for a tax increase that, that our index is 3.8 and the increase was 3.79. Uh, we've certainly talked about, uh, the rationale for that, um, at, at length. And, uh, but if there are questions about that, or if you want to have a discussion about that, I was asked, and it was a good question. Last year, we had approved the budget with that, with a tax increase, but then COVID hit and we had a very good and lengthy discussion about what to do with the circumstances of COVID last year. If you recall, where everybody spoke and kind of gave their feelings and then we set a percentage. But it, it, tonight would be a good opportunity to, uh, to talk about that. If you have feelings about that, if you'd like to see a different number there. Otherwise it will, will come back with that, uh, 3.799, I think it's 7999, for next week, which would be the, uh, proposed, uh, final budget. Uh, and I'll stop and, and let you guys talk about that then. If anyone has any questions or comments. Okay, uh, I will keep going then. Uh, the Lebanon County CTC budget is typically to us prior to, uh, right about the time we, uh, adopt the proposed final budget. Uh, and we have that for you. Dave, did you have anything from them? Uh, that passed okay, I guess. And, 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 uh, it came our way and, and sounded like it went through pretty well. But I, I know that you talked about a project they were doing and it's included in there. Is there anything else that you wanted to hit? We're good.
No, la- last year that, cause of COVID, they decided to do zero percent. This year it's a very modest increase. I, it's right around 3%. But just like us, they have operations and they have to keep up with price of cost of living adjustments and inflation. Nope, I have nothing.
Good clarification on that. Uh, and item E is, uh, we have some inactive student activity accounts. Um, some have been transferred to other accounts. They are listed there for you that we're currently not using. So we're going to terminate those accounts. Uh, nobody's lost any money and we're not taking it from, uh, a, a group to give to a group that's not, uh, similar or hasn't taken over similar responsibilities. Uh, but we're going to get, clean up some of those activity accounts that have been there and have, uh, not been used. Uh, I do want to double check, uh, and we'll do that prior to next meeting to make sure. I think I said annual, we're, the Vista agreement is, is just for the remainder of this year. Wanted to make sure I clarify that. Any questions on any of those?
Uh, so Dr. Messinger, the strength and volleyball, those I assume are somewhere else now?
Uh, yeah, yes. If, we, we now have a volleyball club and, and Ms. Martin, Leanne, are you there?
I am here, hi.
Do you know where, do you know exactly where the volleyball, uh, funds were transferred to?
I do not, but what happened is some of them is like a booster club started and then they kind of left and they tried to use down a lot of the money. But if it was here, I'm not sure where we transferred it to. Some of the sport ones, we kind of transferred around to other athletics that were still using their student activity account. But we can definitely get that information of where exactly it was transferred to.
And I would ask the same of the strength. I assume that's the weight room?
Did you hear that one, Leanne?
I did, yep. I'll look into both of those and find out where we.
Why don't we just go through the list and sometime between now and next Tuesday and just say, you know, give them an idea where they went?
Thank you.
And hide your new car.
Are there any other questions on these items? And is everyone comfortable with all of them on the consent calendar? All right, moving ahead to item eight, buildings and grounds.
Uh, yeah, the first one, I'm really happy to be able to work with Fredericksburg Sewer and Water. Um, certainly they're involved with the building project too. Uh, they, they have had a, a problem. They have, um, out on the middle school side of the building, uh, they have a repeater that sends information up to the water tower. And somewhere in between, there have been trees that have grown that now is interrupting their signal. And they were wondering if they could use the, the height of our building to be able to put the repeater in and which would have a clear shot to that. And it's, it's about the size of a shoebox, a bread box. Uh, we're going to mount it in a closet. Uh, and it costs us, it does cost us about the cost of, to run a light bulb for a year. So it's, there is a little bit of a cost. But, uh, this would be to approve, uh, the use of our closet for, for that repeater. Uh, and the second, uh, the second is about the, uh, the bid for the, um, uh, the turf field. And certainly, um, as you saw, it would be contingent upon Bethel Township's approval on May 13th, uh, which is two days after our board meeting. It did get through the supervisors meeting, uh, the planning commission meeting, I'm sorry. And, uh, and has been moved on to the, uh, supervisors meeting. I know Chad does not anticipate any issues. Uh, and certainly if that amount is something, uh, that is not a project that is going to be impacted by some of the things we've seen. We don't have joists, we don't have steel beams. We're just talking about the turf at this point. Uh, there is some fencing, uh, but certainly if that is a higher amount, you know, we can always move that to a discussion. I don't know what we're anticipating. Uh, but right now we have quite a, we, we have a good number of, uh, of, of people that we believe are bidding. And we'll find out in a couple of days, uh, what that looks like and then we'll bring the, bring that to you.
Are there any questions on those items? Clarify on the turf field. So if, if the price is higher than what we had anticipated, there would, could be some more discussion about that. Am I clear?
Absolutely. And, and that I think is what Dan was saying too, even with the building. You know, if we go out to bid and those bids don't come in, in an amount that we're comfortable with, you reject the bids, you know, and you, you wait, you, you make adjustments, you whatever, whatever we decide to grow, you know, to, with the direction to go at that point. But to go to bid, well, with the turf field, it's already a bid. So we're going to get numbers and see where they are. But the same thing will apply with the building too. I think that's what the point Dan was trying to make earlier.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Yep.
Yeah, I just, um, I, I just, looking at that field, um, this past week and the usage of that field. I mean, we have some of our rec leagues that are u- utilizing where I think that turf field is going to be. And so, um, you know, I'm just thinking about, um, you know, what maybe additional discussions have gone on as far as the use of that field. Because right now I'm seeing it used somewhat for high school and, you know, somewhat for the rec. So I'm just.
Absolutely.
About those rec leagues.
Uh, we anticipated, um, you know, the, the rec leagues continuing. Uh, it, it should be a benefit for them. And ultimately there'll be lights, which, you know, in the, in the fall, and we'll have to talk about, you know, can they contribute to fees and things like that? But in the fall, when it's getting dark at 6:30 and it's really, really tough for our soccer programs, uh, to be able, and, and football, uh, to be able to practice late at night. A tremendous asset for them to be able to turn on lights and get on that turf field. All kinds of weather, uh, there's a, there's a, if you recall, there'll be a main field, but there'll also be a practice field to the right of it, uh, if you're looking from the building. Um, I've, I've learned a little bit about this as we've gone through. Evidently they make paint that can go on for three months or it can go on for a day and be taken off. So we can paint it specifically for our, our programs to practice or for youth programs to be able to use, uh, which gives us some flexibility there too. So I think it'll be an, an asset for our youth programs. And in the spring, we don't use that very often.
Okay.
You know, it's, really don't use it at all in the spring.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
And just to be clear, if, uh, if for whatever reason the bids are too high and we reject all of them due to the timing, that essentially means that we're putting this off for a year probably.
The turf field would have to be put off. If we don't get the turf field started by June, it won't be finished in time for the fall season.
Yeah.
And that's really just the, the field and some fencing. I mean, there's some things that go along with it, but we're not touching the concession stand yet.
Any other questions? Moving on to item nine, our extracurricular items.
Uh, 10.1 is final adoption of, uh, ADO, policy 801, 802, 803, and 813. 10.2 is the tentative adoption, the first reading of policy 805, 805.1, 805.2, and 807. 10.3 is the retirement of policy 540. Uh, it is now covered in policy 813. And 10.4, we have two revisions, um, for, uh, curriculum. And I, I just wanted to clarify what a revision means. And I'll give you an example. And I had a good question that, um, I, I, I thought you'd all benefit from. For instance, the health curriculum, the, the, they, it has been determined as we've taught this particular class that the, uh, unit on CPR and first aid was longer than what, uh, is, was needed. And so they reduced that amount of time and then they picked up two, two other topics, uh, to insert into. Do you remember what those two were? Lymphatic and respiratory systems. Yeah. Um, and so they, 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 they adjusted based on the time needed and then added those two concepts. So the curriculum didn't change. And a lot of times these revisions aren't changing very much. Uh, but just to be clear that these are revisions. These are not, um, from scratch courses. We already have these courses, we just have revised them. And this would be the tentative adoption of those. And 10.5 would be the, uh, uh, high school, award at high school diploma for each of the 153 seniors pending their completion of all graduation requirements. I believe there's a few people in this room that have people on that list.
We're praying.
Any questions on any of those?
Gary, could you explain what the revision to the English 10 curriculum was? I was interested in that.
Uh, I, I honestly, we would have to get the, the teacher to, uh, to go through that. It goes through, uh, the, the teacher department chair, that, those guys take a, a look at that. But the actual specifics, um, while Brad and I look at them, um, I would need them to, to give us that. I will get that information and I can send that out. I, I can actually send out the health as well.
That'd be great. But this is an existing class.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, okay, good. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we're going to take a step back and go back to extracurriculum. Nine, I don't, we didn't cover nine, right?
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that at the top of the page. Thank you. Yeah, we have a couple of trips. One, uh, one is, uh, the environmental science class is part of their educational experience. Typically goes to Delaware Bay. Typically that is a night trip, overnight trip. Uh, we are not doing overnight this year, um, but they are going to go up and come back. Uh, and then you heard last, uh, week, the, um, uh, presentation on the, uh, the, uh, Family and Consumer Science Trip, uh, from Mrs. Frye. Uh, and that trip is on there. That would be for, uh, 2022. Uh, and then also I, I talked to you in an email about the agreement between varsity brands and sent you an example of the branding guide. Um, if you paid any attention to that, it, it, it comes out with a really neat product to the point where we would have very specific colors. There's a, a, a color number that gets associated with it. Those colors then would be used as we do jerseys, as we do, um, you know, banners and things like that. Uh, they're going to take a look at our mascot. As you know, we use the Minnesota Vikings Viking right now.
No, we don't.
No, I'm sorry, we don't.
We, we use one that looks very similar.
Very similar. The beard is slightly different. Um, apologize for that. Uh, so they're going to look at that, they're going to look at, uh, some, um, some, uh, fonts for different, uh, our different wording, Vikings and, and, and we'll come out of that with a whole branding guide that can be used for our athletic programs, can be used for our booster calls, can be used for our youth sports to use, um, our PTOs. And so really exciting and long overdue. And I know Mrs. Sel will be smiling because when, when I took, when she, right before she left, she said, please get this done. It's the one thing I want you to do. And so, um, we're working on that. And then, so that agreement would be, uh, uh, on there as well.
Any questions on those items?
Yeah, sorry. I sometime am honest to a fault.
Moving on to item 11, human relations. Moving on to item 11, human relations.
Okay, we have 11.1, improve the, we have employment of a professional substitute listed there. 11.2 is a leave request, an unpaid leave for a teacher at Jonestown Elementary. Item three, it's that time of year where we have some folks leaving and retiring, and we'll celebrate them before they go. But a few folks that we are going to miss terribly. I will say that we've already started to look for replacements, but they're going to be irreplaceable, irreplaceable in terms of their, what they've brought to Northern Lebanon. 11.4, there are two requests for professional leaves for you there. 11.5 is a to be determined, Act 93. We need to determine the base raise for Act 93. We also, with 11.6, need to determine the base raise for our classified personnel. 11.7, we need a board treasurer. Our board treasurer will be not running. And so therefore, we need someone to be board treasurer. So we're going to need a volunteer for that, for the agenda for next week, unless anyone wants to, that really makes them excited and they want to volunteer to look at checks and want to do that now. Holler if you want to do that. And we also, our board secretary is up. And I would recommend the election of Mrs. Martin for board secretary, who currently holds that position, if there are no objections to that. So I'll open it up to you guys in terms of secretary and treasurer. Any comments or thoughts on that?
Would we take nominations next week then, too?
We certainly can. We would move it prior to discussion then at that point, if we do that, yeah.
I'm prepared to make a nomination tonight, but I don't know if it's appropriate to do it tonight or next week.
You can make a recommendation.
Okay. I'd recommend Director Marlowe for the position of treasurer. I would be okay with that.
Are there any other questions on those items? Item 12 is an informational item. Item 13 is new business. Is there any new business for discussion this evening?
If I could make just a comment on, back on the building side, on what we were talking about. I know, you know, the worry of costs going up. I mean, we're certainly seeing that in many things already, business world, et cetera. And I think the comment that I heard, which I would echo, is we're not going to see these costs come back down anytime soon. You know, probably best case, they might start to flatten out. My opinion, probably in about two years. I mean, we're seeing just massive changes in pricing. The labor adjustments that are happening right now, those as well, I mean, they're going to continue to go up. And we, and that's going to drive some of these other costs long-term up. So, you know, if we get bids back and they're fairly acceptable, they're within our range, you know, I think it's prudent to continue to move forward because, you know, a simple inflation of 3% on this project, and we're talking 1.5 million. Our annual savings, we've already said, is somewhere neighborhood 1.8. So the sooner we get some of those things started and moving forward, the better off we are. And that inflation of 3% might not be what we see. We might see something far greater than that. So as that comes back, hopefully, we do, it does come back within kind of the guidelines we set. But I think what we're seeing, unless it's terribly out of whack, we should consider moving forward with it.
I think just to echo that, we also looked at numbers to fix current buildings, which were actually higher than building a new building. So I think watch, you know, seeing that money go into a new building versus into old dilapidated buildings that we just, we don't need to fix, I think is also something to keep in mind.
I agree. Yeah, and the borrowing cost right now as well. I mean, that, that is, this economic situation changes here. I mean, we could see that shift. And the cost of money right now, what we're looking at right now, I mean, it's, yeah, it's unheard of. A small change in that wipes out, you know, savings we get by waiting and hoping that some of the material costs will flatten or come down.
Yeah. You know, the factor of the savings for the building in terms of personnel is something that we, you forget about that a little bit. We've already begun that. I've asked Leanne actually to start keeping track and presenting it then annually. We had one retirement this year at the elementary level in the classroom. We did have a music, but we're replacing that one. But at the, in the classroom level, we had a retirement. We were able to not replace that position. So we're reducing staff by that person for now. You know, certainly as other people retire. We're going to look for ways to continue to reduce so that two years from now, we're in a good position moving over there. But we've already started looking at positions. And I, there's quite a few positions that we'll be able to redo. And I'm very confident in that number of 1.8 to 2.1 million in terms of savings.
Yeah, and I think that 1.8, I might be a broken record on this, but that is a flat number. You know, I know we modeled that out like 10 years. But if you, if we didn't do that, that 1.8 really every year just continues to go up with, you know, all the benefits, et cetera. And so the sooner we get that started, the sooner that savings is real. I know we're not, we're not doing anything in terms of cuts. It's, we're going to let attrition really take this, which I think is the right way. But, but that is, yeah, if we delay, then we're delaying, we're delaying that as well.
Well, and I will just add, we talked very briefly about, and the board understands, I think that, you know, we talked about the K-6 V3 virtual teachers. Due to class sizes, we were able to transition two people into those positions without hiring. You know, and there's still potential for people to leave. And we do have a position available that we may need to replace, and that's fine. But just those two moves, I mean, I know this year is a different year, but to give you a conservative number, it's over $150,000 that we've paid for V3 teachers outside of the school day. So by moving two people and then not having to pay outside of the school day that $150,000, that's also a savings for us. And I think actually improves greatly our product for K-6 V3 students because they will have that synchronous opportunity every single day with those teachers.
Yeah, and not to make it all about doing this for the money piece. It is, it is about the long-term goal of educating the kids, right? So the sooner we get the project moving, the sooner we move on that, the sooner we save tax dollars, et cetera.
Thank you, Director Marlowe. I wholeheartedly agree with the points that you've made. Any other comments or new business? May I have a motion to adjourn? May I have a second? Is there any discussion? This is a unanimous roll call vote. Your vote will be recorded in the affirmative unless you say nay or I abstain. The motion has passed. This meeting is adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone.